Item number one, consider extension of special parking provisions, favoring one through four. Do we have, does anyone, I'm sorry. Did you all have a statement that you wanted to make part to our discussion?
Sure.
Okay, if you want to come over here.
It's on. All right, my name is Abby Jones, this is my brother Ben. He and I are opening a event space here in White Bar in the western domain at 607 West Main Street. I don't know if it's possible or not, but it's essentially the block inside of Acorn. So, we were looking at two different properties, one on Creek and one on Main Street. And we have heard claim and zoning about it. We were initially with the impression that one block prior to Acorn was within the parking provision that states that you don't have to have additional parking outside of Main Street parking. So, we are requesting that the parking provision for Central Business District be put in place up to Acorn Street, the block past us. Right now, as it is, the property is, you know, property line to property line. On the left side of us is an open lot that Fred Bog owns, but isn't open to the idea of parking. On the other side of us are two existing buildings that go right to up to the street, so there's no parking available there. And behind, so the property itself that we have is 70,000 square feet, indoor and outdoor space. But the outdoor space is really going to be used for corn slabs, as Dan Paul and Black said. The outside is really what makes the place. So, and aside from that, we don't have an easement that allows us to drive down that property to get in the back. So, even if we put parking in the back, there is no need for there, so we aren't allowed to drive on this property. So, we're just requesting that we have the same parking provision as Central Business District does.
Do you have any questions?
No.
One.
Well, I think what she was referring to is she approached the planning staff, the development review committee meetings that we have on Thursdays with their project. And initially, it was a little unclear to us exactly the extent of the property and what the extent of their project was. But nonetheless, we inadvertently informed them that the parking provisions that were expanded in 2014 actually went to the end of the historic district, which is actually Adrian Street, okay? Which there in the 600 block, which would include their property, okay? But in fact, when we amended the parking provisions, we went to Booby Street on the west and Elk Street on the east. We extended basically a block, a couple blocks just on the west and one block on the east, okay? We did that to correspond with the commercial Central Business District, okay? That's where the Central Business District zoning stops. So, in the block that they're in, it actually is a regular C2 zone, okay? You can see that on the map that I've handed out to you. The orange color is C2 and the red color is CBD. And the hash line is the historic district, okay? So, as Ms. Jones indicated, the property that they have doesn't fall in the provisions of the code that we adopted or that we changed 2014. So, they're required by our zoning ordinance to provide the difference between the use that they're proposing and the use that there was previously, okay? And that would equate to about 22 parking spaces in this particular situation. Well, obviously, they don't have room on site to accommodate that, okay? So, their really, their only option would be to secure parking from an adjoining property or somewhere within 300 feet. Well, like you said, they weren't able to secure that parking. So, they're really back to, are, is the city willing to extend these special parking provisions to the west beyond the current limit, which is Booby Street, okay? I provided you with a, I think I gave you a copy of the, well, no, actually, what you have in your packet is the off-site or remote parking provisions. But basically, the advantage to them would be if we extended the parking provisions to include their lot or their block or even beyond their block, would be if they have a change of use of a property, and as long as they don't expand the building, they don't have to provide additional parking. That's what exists today in the Central Business District and within the parking provisions that we have. In other words, if you change the use from an office, which has a low parking demand, to a restaurant or the bar, you still don't have to have additional parking. The theory there is that we have a dense downtown, dense commercial area, and there just isn't physical space to have parking. So, you take advantage of the parking that's on the street, okay? And thus far, we've restricted that to just be the Central Business District zone, okay? So, if we did do something beyond that, then we would be going into a different zoning district, which would be C2, which is a general zoning district, okay? And the reason we're here at the council tonight is because they are requesting that we consider extending that provision to include, in their case, the 600 block, but we would suggest even going beyond that if we wanted to look at extending. Pat and I have talked just very briefly about, we would probably want to include some specific exceptions or criteria, in other words, to qualify for that. Because I wouldn't think that we would want to include vacant tracts being exempt from parking, in other words, if somebody comes in and builds a building or does a plan, then they could provide parking. On the other hand, there are certain locations like theirs and the one that sort of them that has basically no physical space to do anything with their site. So, if they were to convert from a lower intensity use to a higher intensity use, they would be limited and they could, in all likelihood, couldn't do that, okay? So, we have no objection to running this through the process and taking it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for reclamation and do some analysis ourselves. And then ultimately, it would end up back to the City Council for your decision. We would expect we could do that in relatively short order, probably in the September cycle. So, if the council's willing to authorize us to do that, we would be willing to do that.
The only thing I will add, for the benefit of the public and of the council, whether it is, is we get a lot of requests from the city to try to encourage more development in the West Main area. And this would certainly be helpful to some populars in that area and could create some other development opportunities in this area.
The historic district is consecrated?
At Acorn. It goes one lot beyond the street. It picks up those lots that are on the west side of Acorn, but that's where it stops. You see the cross that's lined? You know, the other thing we'll need to consider is how much parking is within the block of Main Street there? What's the speed of the traffic there? You know, I think it's turned to 40 there already. You know, we'll need to think about, okay, are people going to be parking around the block because we have residential, you know, homes back on San Antonio Street? So, we'll take all of those things into consideration and see just exactly how many properties would be able to apply for this when we make our final recommendation, if you authorize us to proceed.
At this time, does it make sense to go all the way to the Y and look at all of those three blocks?
Well, we could certainly do that. I don't think it hurts to look at the whole thing, though. But we may end up recommending that it be limited. I don't know that for sure, but we would certainly can consider that for sure.
I agree with Ken. I think we need to, we're going to get people down at that west end. We're going to need to get someplace to park. Do we need lotion anywhere?
No.
If you all take one. If we need one, I'll take one.
Hey, Mayor, my comments that I had are very brief. Just got three items to report on. First off, we have, as you know, completed three budget meetings over the last couple of weeks, including one this morning with the county commissioners. And we have two more budget meetings scheduled over the next week, including this Thursday at 5:00 at the Cardinal Room at the golf course. This is related to talking about the options for future operations of the golf course. And that's at 5:00, which we had, we were sent an agenda last week. And we look forward to that meeting. And then, next Monday, a week from today, at 5:00 in the City Hall Conference Room, we're going to have another budget work session. We'll be talking about the, of course, the water fund, which we did not complete discussion on that, and the budget revisions that have been made so far, and how little budget revisions have affected fund balances of various funds. We'll be talking about, before the conversation's over, there've been some comments today. Couple of council members have sent me regarding cost of living adjustments, so we'll talk about that. So, there'll be a variety of different things we'll be talking about next Monday night at 5:00. And then following that meeting, we can schedule another budget meeting if we need to. Give reminder that two weeks from now, on August 17th, we're scheduled to, the council to adopt the effective tax rate. So, if there's anything major that's hanging out there that would affect that tax rate, we need to discuss and resolve that issue by the August 17th. Because once the effective tax rate is adopted, you cannot increase that rate. You can lower it, but you can't increase it. So, if you want to have another budget meeting before you set the effective tax rate, then we'll have to look at some dates after August 10th and August 17th. So, that's where we are as far as budget discussions. Are there any questions on that?
Would it be revised budgets in the prior?
We're trying. The Lord's, in fact, the Lord's working on that this evening, instead of coming to the meeting. Our primary goal is to try to get something out by Thursday, if possible. They bring it to the meeting Thursday night, should it be there. But we're hoping to get three items to the council this week. One is the comprehensive listing of all the budget revisions, including the ones that were made today in the county meeting. Number two is a revised budget document that has all of those changes incorporated into the various funds. And the third is a report on the fund balances, how what status of those fund balances are going to be changed. So, we'll hopefully get those three documents out of the council this week.
Do you think we'll need the meeting that was continually scheduled on the 26th?
I'd say please don't.
What's on the list?
Talk about it. That's probably only if we do not adapt to the technical. Okay, any other questions to come after this? We're not, I wanted to remind you that tomorrow at 4:00, we'll be having the initial meeting of the Charter Review Committee. We're going to notify all the Charter Review Committee members and also the two council members that are serving as ex-official members of that committee. And the first meeting is basically devoted to meeting organized, selecting a chair, a vice chair, setting the meeting schedule for the next four to six months. And Pat and I will next month make comments and just provide some initial direction. And so, we're not thinking tomorrow's meeting will last very long. And then, the next meeting, the second meeting, will become more subject-oriented, looking at maybe a couple of chapters in the charter and really jumping into looking at possible revisions. So, the goal is to track the complete process by December or January. So, council will have plenty time to review that and consider putting in on the ballot for the May election of late 26th and 27th. So, that's kind of our target. And are there any questions on that? Meeting's at City Hall. And it is supposed to be? No, it is supposed to. No, it is supposed to. So, we only have two counts to be telling that the council has a vision of the country. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. The only employee recognition I had this evening, Steve, Chief Wad Sidney, a copy of a letter to the editor who was in the paper last couple of weeks, from Cindy Phillips. She's with the Fredericksburg Bible Church, and they head the Vacation Bible School. And she was complimentary of the police officers that participated in that Vacation Bible School, Bradley Durst, Frank Hallbecker, and Billy Schmidt, all came to the class. They did, she said they did a wonderful job interacting with the kids, and they were kind and patient with each child. And so, she had a letter of appreciation in the newspaper, so I wanted to share that with you guys. That's all I have to report, Mr.?
Do you want to mention your thoughts on what's going on?
Didn't have any genuine feedback. Yeah, yeah. Always a must play over there.
All right, item's future agenda.
Mayor, rather than have y'all write this down, actually, Shelley keeps a listing of future agenda items, so I'll just pass this out and we'll just kind of go through that. August 17th, so far, we have eight items on the agenda, so that way you won't have to write this down and you can kind of make notes. So, one of the first items is we have a bid award that will be ranked for the council for the channel pretty much to the drainage area behind the Cuzalde Warehouse. That project's going to bid out, and we'll have a recommendation for a contract award at the next meeting. We will have a professional service contract, the utility master plan. That's something that we've been working on last couple of months. I think we finally got the contract negotiated and ready to present to the council. Number three is we have a bid for the purchase of a new Fuel Island. The Fuel Island that we have down at Cuzalde Warehouse is pretty well shot obsolete, and something we've been for a number of years, and so we have that. That's in our budget for this year. And then, we have a couple of public hearings scheduled that went to the Planning Commission, two of them went to the Planning Commission last week, I believe, or this week. The one is on Crab Apple Grove, the refilling of Crab Apple Grove Phase Two. And we have a public hearing on the adoption of the design guidelines and standards ordinance. And this is something we've been working on for the past year, and that's coming forward to the Planning Commission and City Council. And then, as previously reported, we have the public hearing on the effective tax rate and the proposed budget. And so, the council also has to approve the tax rate at that meeting, so those are actually two agenda items. And then, Ernie and his staff has made a request for additional hot funds. What we have, we have over collected hot funds over the last year, and he's requested access to the five sevenths of that over collection. I think it's about $70,000. He has a proposal on how CBD would utilize that money, that they would present to the council next meeting. And then, we have an executive session to update you on wholesale power rates. I think we agreed on that up to last meeting, and those rates are getting very competitive, and we wanted to share a collection on that with you so far. Those are the items that we have so far. Questions? Appeals?
All right, item number four is public comments. Sandra, I think you will find it to speak this evening.
Hello, I'm Sandra Weinheimer. I am here again to talk about the Old Fair Park. The Old Fair Park is not just a city concern. It's cherished by locals and those outside the city limits as well. It is used by the young and old. Every night, you can drive by the soccer field and see pickup games of soccer, frisbee, or football. I have talked to many people around the community, and everyone is appalled that any of the Old Fair Park might be altered, including paving the soccer field for a parking lot to accommodate the culinary center. 506 people signed a petition stating the park should not be altered without a vote. These signatures range from local to out-of-town residents, and included young people and even some children. Street safety seems to be the excuse for building a parking lot. However, Ufer Street is so narrow and small, and cars and trucks tend to move slowly there. It has stop signs at each end of the street. The speed limit is not over 30 and could even be lowered to 20. A crosswalk with a yielding traffic light could be installed if safety is a concern. However, is it really unsafe? I think not. I believe, and many others do too, that the council might be listening to money talk instead of its own citizens. The community wants to keep the entire park intact. Here are some comments from the second petition. This petition of the required 200-plus local qualified citizens, which I'll present to Shelley Britton. These comments range from, "The families and the kids need this. The kids should come first. This is a huge part of our community, and there isn't enough green to put for the citizens." So, again, I'm just asking that the soccer field not be paved, that the culinary center make a figure, another place for parking. And I have 506 signatures here, and I didn't get this motorized because I know this isn't official. I mean, I know that you have to have a certain amount of qualified voters, but I just wanted everyone to see the impact that we have, a lot in the community that want to keep the park. And then, Shelley Britton will receive, I don't know what to do because she's not here. Oh, this is an motorized petition with adult local voters. So, the emails I received from you, three of you said that you think that the soccer field will be paved, and two of you said, "Well, culinary school might not have enough money," or culinary center might not have enough money, so you're not sure. Kent Meyer said, "You know, when I first thought of that, you would put stuff in the paper to keep us updated." So, what is going on?
Since it's a public comment, we cannot carry on a conversation with you. This we can.
Should we tell the voters that I was left off the agenda?
Well, that's.
I was supposed to be on the agenda, according to emails to council members. I'm sorry to say that I wasn't going to complain, but since you brought it up.
No, I understand that you were left off the agenda. I may, council may make any comments during council comments that relate to this. Okay, so, we can listen to you during this time. Once we're through the public comment and we go into council comments, the council members can make a statement.
Okay, towards the audience.
Towards the audience, yes.
Okay, if not, I would definitely want to be on the next agenda, the next meeting's agenda, if we don't have communication here about what's going on. Thank you, so I give this to Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Also, here's a statement that I probably haven't worked on, some new additions I'd like to roll through.
And if this is the, just for reference, this is the. Thank you.
I'm Tom Musselman. I live on Friendship Lane in the city, as well as in the county. I understand that the commission's story was highly productive, as it always is with the commissioners, and that they seem reasonable why they should spend more money to help us. The reason, the reason I'd like to speak this evening is I looked on the city website for the, the city of Fredericksburg Charter. And the current, the copy of the charter that's on the website is the adopted 1991 charter, okay? And the, I think one issue that we have is that we had a charter amendment election last year in May of 2014, where the voters passed an amendment to the charter. So, I'm wondering, is the city planning on updating charter with charter amendment so that we have a current copy of the charter? The charter amendment that was passed by the voters limited transfers from enterprise funds without a public vote. So, the question that I would have in budget meetings that are, that are taking place in budget meetings that are going to be forthcoming are if we have, if we need to have budget transfers into funds, or budget transfers to fund deficits, is there sufficient, is there sufficient monies in the general administrative funds that would not necessitate a transfer from enterprise funds so that it would not kick in the budget, the charter amendment? So, the other question that I have, and I think that we will have to address in the, I guess, in the charter review, is has the city received any kind of ruling from the Attorney General or some, somewhere on? I know that when the charter amendment was passed, there was some question as to the effect of that, the effect of that amendment on the, on the bond ratings, on bonds that had been, the ability of the city to pay their bond and indebtedness. And so, I'm just, I'm just wondering if the legal aspects of charter amendment have been, if cities, I mean, they've thoroughly investigated that. So, basically, I guess, one issue that we got, that you need to be able to tell the voters is, is the charter amendment passed by them in May of 2014, is it legal or is it not legal? Is it in effect or is it not in effect? So, that's something, that's something that I guess we will be looking at in the charter review. And if you have, if you have any information that you can give the public, that would be, that would be, I think, beneficial. If we could get a updated city charter on the website, I think that would also be beneficial to the public.
Can you send something to me?
Yes, no problem. Thank you very much.
Now, I know you're going to ask me at this time, Ms. Powell, but Pat, can you be on to, can you do a break? No.
Hi. Hi, I'm Steve O'Brien. I'm from the county. And, well, I just came here tonight to see if you guys were going to start another boom off with the park by H and E. What did you call it, the?
Old Fair Park.
Old Fair Park. Yeah, I've been talking to a couple of people. Somebody raised that to my attention, and I said, "Well, why would they be taking a public park and putting a private parking lot for a cooking school?" And I understand you need short-order chefs and cooks and people to serve food, but why are you taking away a park to teach people how to cook food? I mean, we have a lot of cooks here. Culinary is a cute word. It's a trade school. Is this going to be a private, private operation? Is somebody going to fund this and buy that land and so forth? And then, we're going to provide them parking? Yeah, that's what I'm going to be interested to see how you guys deal with in the coming weeks. And I have to go home now, so I'll watch the rest on the internet. Thanks.
You can, sir, you can always give one of us a call. We have Call City Hall, and you can get any of our phone numbers.
I've tried that before, thank you.
Is anyone else down here that wants to speak today?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Francisco Nieto. I'm with FBT Live. I lived here 30-plus years, all right? So, I played at that playground that Lysander was talking about. And this whole idea came to me long before this meeting. I was aware of the plans in the beginning when they were talking about it. So, I'm just a little confused, and whenever y'all can answer that, I understand, you know, I understand all the rules, whatever. But I believe you were just giving a business owner gum about parking spots and then doing something with their parking spots, but you're going to make an exemption because the plan calls not only for. calls not only for, everybody keeps on hitting on the culinary and wine thing, but there's also, in the proposed plan, there's a hotel. So here we are, we're going to go ahead and make space for a, a private business, well, it should be a private business, both of them, and then we're going to provide their parking by taking away a functioning field for presumed profits. It's kind of interesting. And especially coming from under your administration, Ms. Laura Alzner, as someone who counters a champion of, you know, historic district and historic society, kind of confuses me that someone who, when a few meetings, well, a few meetings ago, made a comment saying that she wishes her home would be declared a historic glance mark so that her neighbors can't do anything around her neighborhood. So here, back to history, since we want to preserve history, John Hall did for Van Danny Ray. Why take around something that's been a part of our community from the beginning? This is something that is being used, like Miss Sandra pointed out, it's something that's used every day. We can go there right now, we can go there in the blistering time of heat, and there's somebody at these parks. So why minimize them? Why get rid of them at all? Because I understand that some, one of the plans is, does those call for it, to just kind of shrink everything, not get rid of the park, just kind of shrink it. And if we want to talk safety, well, that there, right there is a safety concern, because right now, how it stands, everybody from the baseball fields to soccer fields to skate park has a designated area, has a safe place in the area they can conduct their leisurely activities. If we go ahead and take that away from them or shrink it down, then all of a sudden, skateboarders are going to have to worry about soccer, what's baseball flying into the, into that skating area, which causes, to cause them to skateboard, stop on a dock, because anybody who's ever been on a skateboard or around a skateboard knows all it takes is a little pebble, and then you're eating pavement. So, and then soccer players or baseball players are going to have to worry about skateboards flying out from underneath somebody and going and hitting them in the head. So when we want to talk safety, as it stands right now, is the safest way it goes. Then if that road is narrow, there's stops, there's stops on on one end, and there's always stop on one end, and a stoplight at the other end, and most people are pretty respectful about that area because most of the members of the community, I mean, what she says she has over five hundred signatures, uses that area, and so they understand the value of it, and understand you can't be driving like an idiot through the middle of town. So I hope that y'all do put this on the agenda for the next time we meet, so we can officially get some comments and, and actually get someone who's with us, and as most of us can probably agree, anyone who's had kids here, or grandkids here, or relatives here that come to visit, there's nothing but to use to do in this community, and we need to keep that. We need to not make that a town slogan, we need to stay the quaint family center that we are. And, yeah, I think that's it. Oh, and what Steve was talking about just a minute ago, it's FPG Live on Ustream. You can Google those two terms, and you can find my feed.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Council comments. First, Mr. Nito, I'd like to correct one thing concerning a statement that I made, which referred to my home. My concern was that, as an example, my home was not rated as a historic home during the process of doing those ratings in the community. Thereby, my neighbors who were rated as historic homes had the potential for something negative going on to my location, which would impact their homes and their bed and breakfasts that they have. And I was trying to point out that we need to be careful within the community that we don't skip over...